At this time, I've asked Teresa to add, and I appreciate it to acknowledge me here, is willing to do that as well, but I've asked Teresa she will go to her prayer again. So at this point Teresa wherever she's out here, I want to ask her that she will proceed with this and will go to her prayer again one time so she will ask all of these candidates wherever to go to pray again, she will be all squalling in prior to our official call order.
I solemnly swear that I will perform with fidelity the duties of the office which I have been elected and which I am about to assume. I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of Tennessee and the United States and faithfully perform the duties of the office of County Commissioner representing me, this district of Coffee County, Tennessee. Congratulations.
This will be the first time I could have had twenty-one of the commissioners, but I will get you out here sometime before midnight, but anyway, thanks Teresa for being able to call and reach orders. With that in mind, I'm gonna have a little divestment from this, and I'm gonna ask you who the commissioners, if you would stand up here in a circle, so everyone will look at the picture of y'all. So if y'all would line up, you're, uh, the new commissioner, or Commissioner Warren, going in, preparing to order, all the way down to the ready to order, so maybe we'll go over in and tell you what all the other, so that's more efficient a few little, uh, tell you what all the first, I think, just more same circles, so it can be here, first thing orders. It's a broken circle. She was getting a picture. One more thing. And Teresa. Don't have everyone, I should say. At a moment while that, our sheriff, uh, all the commissioners order, and open us for business, they will have an indication and a pledge, and then I've got expression, and I'll hear the thanks of all of our agents, so I hope it's all been worked upon. So this time, Sheriff, Sheriff Chad Park is a willing candidate, Sheriff.
Thank you, come to order, and now the county commissioner, open for business.
Thanks Sheriff. At this time, I'll call Pastor Ron Fuller, uh, Southern Fellowship pastor to lead us in our indication for the law. Thank you for the leadership and your willingness to, he gets, he gets on whatever law to do the prayer for us, I appreciate him doing that.
Heavenly Father, on this day, September the 11th, we do ask for peace in the hearts of the people who lost so much in 2001 on this day, and for our whole nation that lost a sense of peace and security on that day. Heavenly Father, we thank you that you have provided, out of all the people of Coffee County, able people, empower them to be God-fearing people, truth, hate and covetousness, that they be just in fulfilling their office duties with wisdom, understanding, and discernment in the service of the people. Bless them in all they do, for the prosperity of this county and its people. And now I say the blessing of our Lord is on you and all that is yours by blood, adoption, or assignment, in the mighty name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
At this time, I call, uh, Tim Supplefield and I, on this special day, now as a question I'm playing.
I am glad that you stood by, of the United States of America, and to be the role of a faithful worshiper, one nation under God, in the physical, with the Lord, being just as for all.
Back, back seat. What is this day? Question. Babe the monk, what is this day? Nine eleven. We remember. And today we want to have something special that Mr. Brinkin knows something about, because we did something similar to this this morning, and we had a special day of remembrance for those impacted by nine eleven and what happened to all of us. So, at this time, I've asked Todd Crockett and David Ory, both of these retired Air Force veterans, and they were participating in this ceremony with us. So at this time, please listen as we begin this special presentation. It was a clear Sunday in September 2001. We will all remember where we were when we heard the news. Seven fifty-nine AM, American Airlines Flight 11, a Boeing 767 leaves, leaving Boston's Logan International Airport for Los Angeles with ninety-two people aboard. Eight fourteen AM, flight attendants alert ground personnel of hijack, FBI notified. Eight twenty-four AM, Mohammed Atta makes the first of two accidental transmissions. The last known communication from flight attendant Amy Sweeney. Oh my God, we're way too low. Eight forty AM, NORAD, North American Aerospace Defense Command, and NIAS, Northeast Air Defense Sector, respond with two fighter planes, they do not make it before, in the air before. Eight forty-six AM, Flight 11 crashes into floors ninety-three through ninety-nine of the North Tower of the World Trade Center, killing all passengers and hundreds inside the North Tower. Todd.
Eight fourteen AM, United Airlines Flight 175, Boeing 767, leaving Boston's Logan International Airport for Los Angeles, sixty-five people aboard. Eight forty-seven AM, New York City Department and Fire Department dispatches to the World Trade Center, border authority police, again evacuation of the North Tower. Nine oh-two AM, order to broadcast evacuate both towers, estimating ten thousand to four hundred thousand people evacuated. Nine oh-three AM, Flight 175 crashes into floors seventy-five through eighty-five on South Tower of the World Trade Center, killing all passengers and hundreds inside the South Tower.
Mr. Ory.
Eight twenty AM, American Airlines Flight 77, a Boeing 757, leaving Los Angeles International Airport for Los Angeles with sixty-four people aboard. Eight fifty AM, President George W. Bush was alerted that a plane has hit the World Trade Center, he was visiting an elementary school in Service, Oklahoma. Nine oh-eight AM, FAA bans all takeoffs going to New York City area. Nine twenty-four AM, FAA notified deeds of suspected hijacking of Flight 77, after crew and passengers alerted fan members. Nine thirty-seven AM, Flight 77 crashes into the west side of the Pentagon, killing fifty-nine aboard, the plane, and a hundred twenty-five military personnel inside the Pentagon. Nine fifty-nine AM, the South Tower collapses. Ten twenty-eight AM, the World Trade Center North Tower collapses, one hundred and two minutes after struck.
Eight forty-one AM, United Airlines Flight 93, a Boeing 757, leaving Newark International Airport to San Francisco with forty-four people aboard. This flight was originally scheduled to depart at eight AM. Nine thirty-one AM, President Bush calls the events in New York an apparent terrorism, uh, terrorist attack on our country, a national tragedy. Nine forty-two AM, first time in history, the FAA grounds all flights over or bound for the continental United States. Ten oh-seven AM, passengers and crew members of Flight 757 learn of the attacks and attempt to take over the plane. The hijackers deliberately crashed the plane into a field in Somerset County, Pennsylvania, killing all passengers and crew aboard. David.
One oh-four PM, President Bush addresses the nation, and all of around the world is on high alert status. Make no mistake, the United States will hunt down and punish those responsible for these cowardly acts. Five twenty PM, the forty-seven-story Central World Trade Center collapses. Eight thirty PM, President Bush again addresses the nation, calling the attacks evil, despicable acts of terror, and declaring that America, its friends and allies, would stand together to win the war against terror. Two thousand nine hundred and ninety-six people were killed on September 11th, 2001, of which three hundred and forty-three were firefighters, including a child looking to paramedics, the New York Fire Department. Thirty-seven police officers reported to New York and New Jersey Police, twenty-three police officers of New York City Police Department, two hundred and sixty-five employees, including nineteen hostages, and a hundred and twenty-five at the Pentagon.
Let's bow for a moment of silence. May we never forget, may God bless Coffee County, our state, and our nation, in Jesus' At this time, we will, uh, this will be a first for eleven of you, we will now have a real call. So all twenty-one commissioners, would report in please. We'll give you a few, few seconds to figure it out. And he will lead us through it. Twenty-one, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Commissioner Ory, second by Todd Crockett, any discussion? Okay. Twenty-one, thank you. At this time, you reviewed, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, second by Commissioner Tim Supplefield. We have two Supplefields now, so you gotta watch now. The T and T show, okay. Second, and discussion.
Seven, resolutions of memorials and the accommodation. We have eleven for commissioners, and I'll break the first one, and the other ten, I will say their name, and how many years they served. Seven A, resolution 2018-26, resolution in honor and recognition of Warren G. Walker for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee, whereas Warren Walker served as a commissioner for the First District for eight years. Whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved therefore that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Warren Walker for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that Warren Walker receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record, passed and so ordered this eleventh day of September 2018. Seven B, Stephen Jones, eight years. Seven C, Sam Ma, six years. Seven D, Carrie Farah, twelve years. Seven E, Earl Spear, four years. Seven E, seven F, Diana Argraves, four years. Seven G, Tim Morris, eleven years. Seven H, Major Shelton, four years. Seven I, Mark Kelly, fourteen years. Seven J, Kimberly Martin, four years. Seven K, Russ Brinkin, sixteen years. And I call the commissioners.
We're gonna vote on those as a group, those eleven. Motion by Mr. Bryant, second by Commissioner Duncan, discussion. Let's vote please. And I want to thank these individuals for their combined service to Coffee County. We really appreciate you. Twenty-one, yes.
Seven L, resolution 2018-37, resolution in honor and recognition of Stephen M. Graves for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee, whereas Stephen Graves served as an employee of the Coffee County Sheriff's Department for thirty-six years, and last twenty as a Coffee County Sheriff. Whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved therefore that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Stephen M. Graves for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that Stephen M. Graves receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record, passed and so ordered this eleventh day of September 2018.
Thank you, Roxanne. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Tim Supplefield, second by Ashley Kraft, discussion. There being none, let's vote please. And again, I will thank Sheriff Graves for his distinguished lawful career and service to Coffee County. And going forward, we'll pass through the audience, say, for y'all to sign the names on various, we'll get that done, where you can sign off on that. Ready? Okay.
One yes.
Yeah, thank you. At this time, I'll depart from the phone call here a moment, and ask any of our commissioners that are still here, and we again appreciate them for their service, and, uh, do any of you want to have a parting shot, a parting comment? And again, we really appreciate your service, so if any of you wants to take a moment to have a parting thought, have a weapon up and to, and give it to the audience. Okay. No, thank you, okay, I'll try, but thank you for your service, and again, thank all the commissioners for their service, and the sheriff for his continued service over all these years. And we could have done all this individually, like she read, she could read all eleven resolutions, but we do want to get you out sometime in that.
Eight, elections appointments and confirmations, A.A., notaries.
Mr. Baker, I'd like to make a motion that we take this list of notaries and vote on it as a group.
Thank you. Russia taught you well. Okay, and Rosemary can second that, so they've been around and done this a time or two or whatever. So we have a motion second, uh, again by Marvin, second by Rosemary, discussion. There being none, let's vote on the entire group of notaries at one time. As you can see in County government, we like to move things along, and with reason and simplicity, to the extent we can, move things along. We respect your town, appreciate your service.
A.B., Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate you Chairman of this commission.
Thank you, Todd, appreciate your vote of confidence, and I'm willingly elected certain in capacity, so have a motion by Mr. Bryant, second by Mr. Crockett, that you may be confirmed as your commission chairperson, or chairman, and have a motion to, uh, motion second, uh, in discussion, discussion.
Anyone want to change their vote? Anyone want to give?
Okay. A.C., Chairman Pro Tem, and it's all on this time.
That is all on the call at this time.
At this time, we're, caucus picked Jackie Duncan to be the Mayor of Pro Tem.
I would like to second nomination of Mr. Jackie Duncan for the Mayor of Pro Tem.
Are you sure? I'm just kidding. A motion by Tim Supplefield, or second by, that's a good choice, we picked, uh, the second by Rosemary, uh, discussion. Appreciate Jackie's willingness to serve, he will serve well in his capacity. Discussion. Tim.
Okay. Anyone want to change their vote?
Okay, thank you.
A.D., Parliamentarian.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Joe Peddigo, please.
Thank you. I'll throw that one, but, uh, right, second by Commissioner, Mr. Joe Peddigo again serves as our county parliamentarian, and I appreciate his willingness to do that, you have to know by now how critically important that role is, and he's a master at that, and I will thank you for your service all these years. If he ever retired, I think I would tire out the mountain. Second, uh, discussion. There being none, let's vote please. Till. Thank you. And I would mention that, uh, Joe mentioned that on the November commission, at five o'clock, we're gonna have a special call session, I think, the plan for me is we'll have something to present to us that day, but Mr. Peddigo was mentioning that his parliamentarian team, high school parliamentarian team, has, has consented or offered to have a ten or fifteen minute present, presentation on parliamentary figure, and I really appreciate their willingness to do that, we can all learn from that, so I appreciate Mr. Peddigo getting that lined up with them, so we'll be doing that on the November commission meeting at five o'clock, so I appreciate that so much.
A.D., Budget Finance Committee.
At this time, I'll ask the caucuses to share their selected or their recommendations for, uh, to serve on Budget Finance, and as you know, these are standing committee appointments, and appreciate all everyone's willingness to serve on these, we talked extensively about these yesterday, and they did that quite a bit, I appreciate the three caucuses sharing their thoughts and opinions on that, coming up with the best people they could suggest serving in these roles, so with that in mind, I'll call on rule if they would to share with us their recommendations of their appointment record.
Mr. Chairman, the rural caucus would like to put in nomination Commissioner Emily House and Commissioner Bobby Brown for Budget Finance.
Okay. Manchester.
The city caucus has voted, uh, Joey Cox, please to represent us.
And Tillon.
Mr. Chairman, Tillon, the caucus has nominated Lynn Seaborn and Dwight Miller.
I think it's all really good choices, so, uh, that'd be a motion, uh, who will make a motion?
Who would you vote for?
Motion by Jackie Dunn, second by Rosemary Crabtree, discussion. Discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. Thank you for the willingness to serve those five commissioners.
Eight A, Legislative Committee.
Okay. Tellome Caucus, your recommendations.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Tellome has nominated Rosemary Crabtree and Barbara Butler.
Good recommendations. Manchester?
Manchester has elected Conny Norris, other manager. May I please ask you?
Thank you. And Rule?
Rule would like to nominate Commissioner Mark Cunningham, Commissioner Bobby Bryan.
Okay. Have a motion of that effect? Motion by Commissioner Stubblefield, pardon, Tilden Stubblefield, second by Ashley, by Rosemary, excuse me, by Barbara Butler. You think after four years I get that right. Let's vote, please. I know some may be leaving a little earlier than they normally would because we have at 7:00 at night in Central High Auditorium, a Veterans' Patriots Ceremony at 9:00 at 7:00 in honor of our first responders and 9/11 and those that lost their lives in those attacks. Wish you could all win there, but that's just the way it's worked out.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Thank you.
Eight J, Health, Water, and Recreation Committee.
I'll call on Manchester for their appointment first.
Manchester nominated Jimmy Hallis.
Rule?
Commissioner Ashley Craft and Commissioner Scarlett Tuck.
And Tellome?
Commissioner Jackie Dunkey and Commissioner Tilden Stubblefield.
Have a motion to approve? Motion by Barbara and Senator Rosemary Crabtree. Discussion. Let's vote, please.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Thank you.
Thank you. Eight H, Capital Act Committee.
Rule?
Mr. Chairman, Rural Caucus would like to nominate Commissioners Dennis Sun and Commissioner Jim Field.
Okay. And Manchester?
Manchester nominated Commissioner Norris.
And Tellome.
Now, Tellome nominated Commissioner Tim Stubblefield and Commissioner Barbara Butler.
Have a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Craft, second by Commissioner Dunn. Discussion. We're getting a lot of business done in that, in case y'all didn't know. Discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. Rule was, Dennis and Jim Fielding. I get that right, though? It's Dennis and Jim, okay?
Anyone want to change their vote?
Okay.
Eight, Law Enforcement Committee.
Tellome.
Mr. Mayor, Tellome nominated Commissioner Tim Stubblefield and Commissioner Tilden Stubblefield.
And I appreciate Mr. Tilden Stubblefield's willingness to do that, and he has law enforcement experience, and I appreciate his willingness to serve. Manchester?
Mr. Chairman, Manchester nominated Commissioner Tom Crockett.
Okay. And Rule?
Rural Caucus would like to nominate Commissioner Missis Ford and Commissioner Jim Field.
Have a motion to approve? Motion by Barbara Cunningham, second by Commissioner Jackie Dunn. Discussion. Like it when there's no discussion. Okay, let's vote, please. Okay, thank you.
Eight J, Personnel Compensation Committee.
This committee, the makeup is a little different in that when we established this years ago, that's comprised of seven members. The mayor serves on that, and then three elected officials or department heads. I recommend to the commission, Diane Ardrave, our nine one one home center director, Alan Lindley, our EVA homeland security director, and a new sheriff, Chad Park, because he represents over 140 people that he serves, and that's a large group. So we feel like that'd be a really good representation of our elected officials and department heads. And then also comprised of three commissioners, one from each caucus, and I recommend Tim Stubblefield, he's been chairing our PNC committee for a couple of years already, and has done a good job, and I recommend Ashley Craft representing the rule, and Joey Holls representing Manchester. Motion to approve? Motion by Dwight Miller, second by Rosemary Crabtree. Discussion. Andy. Oh, I didn't. Let's vote, please. Excuse me. Carried away on something. Appreciate Andy and Teresa in coming to keep me straight.
Anyone want to change their vote? Eight K, Community Corrections Partnership.
Now, we'll need some help on this. I don't think I carried this to Tellome, but I recommend it passed, and I recommend on that, and our makeup on that is we have the two city police captains, and that would be Mark Golder and Paul Blackwell, and Pastor Ron Fuller, he has served on that, also, the mayor serves on that as well, and Ray Martin, and Russell Baker, and I don't know if I asked the, we have two commissioners on that. Did we discuss that?
You discussed David Ork.
I thought I had that. Okay, David Ork representing Rule, and we need one other commissioner. Did we review, or ask anyone else to serve? I've written down there, I was going to ask either Dwight or Lynn Segros to serve that if one of them wanted to. Dwight, you willing to serve? Thank you. Okay, I'll ask Dwight Miller if he would serve on that committee. That committee, we haven't met, and often we will be meeting more, and I apologize for the mix-up on that, but we will be meeting more going forward, and that committee has a very important function where we are, along with the partnership from Tennessee Corrections Institute, we talk with them about community corrections, and we're here to try to assist the sheriff department in items that we can review together, and we will have periodic jail visits. So we're there to be a service arm and to assist the sheriff and sheriff department in that regard, to make our facility and operations as good as we can, so we're there to work with the sheriff in that regard. So with that in mind, have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
By Tim, and second by Missy. Discussion. Okay, let's vote, please.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Andy. Okay.
Eight L, Investment Committee.
On that, we, those appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the commission, and the trustee serves on that committee is brothers to the mayor, and Mary Anna Edinger, our council budget director, was serving on that committee as well, and we've got three, we'll have three commissioners on there, and we've asked Joey Holls to serve in that role, and Dwight Miller, and Jim Fielding. I think I got that right. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bryan, second by Ashley Craft. Discussion. Okay. Let's vote, please. Anyone missing?
Anyone want to change their vote? Thank you. Eight M, Public Building Authority.
Do we have anything on that to report yet? We do not have a recommendation yet for Rural Caucus. Tellome, I think you're going to defer.
We're going to defer to them.
Okay. Further review.
Further review.
Okay, thank you.
Eight N, County Records.
On that, we meet once a month to review and that's appointed by the mayor, and I'll be serving on that. Also ask Judy Phillips, our archivist, to serve on that, also Donna Tony, she will serve again on that, and Judge Brock. And we had Mark, who had a role in all of that, and probably recall, if we, I know I asked someone to serve on that, I tried to remove one. Scarlett, okay, Scarlett Taggert, she has agreed to serve in that role, and I appreciate that. So those five, Mayor, Judy Phillips, President Dees, Donna Tony, Judge Brock, and Scarlett on that, okay? Have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Rosemary Crabtree, second by Commissioner Todd Crockett. Discussion. There being none, let's vote, please.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Andy. I would mention that there will be many other commissioners appointments and reappointments in January, so I appreciate all of your willingness to serve, so that is, that will get us through the session, and then we'll review that in January for more calls.
Okay. There being no other. Number nine, we have no unfinished business that I'm aware of. Ten, New Business. Ten A, Certificate of Insurance for Government Employees and Elected Officials.
Mary, do you want to say anything on that?
Certificate of Insurance was approved during the normal budget process. This is, we used to get individual bonds for everybody, and the state legislature changed. I gave everybody a copy of the statute, to where now we can incorporate this into our insurance coverage, our liability insurance. This will be your cost savings, and it's easier to keep track of this as well. So the new law says that it has to be approved by the county commission, so that's why it's on the agenda.
And we already have a certificate of insurance on there, okay? So we just gave a, to, to affirm, the motion to affirm this date, or this, a ten. Motion. Motion by Dwight Miller, second by by Barbara Cunningham. Discussion. And this will be a cost savings and
Mr. Chad, is somebody a little more knowledgeable in insurance? The box I see, Chad, that says employees theft, and I looked at the right certificate of insurance, what's, what does that turn it out?
This is a $4,000 blanket coverage.
Okay. Employees theft covers government crime coverage and employee dishonesty insurance coverage equivalent with performance of duty coverage. Hunter Tremble is here, also, if you have further questions.
But this will replace the individual bonds that the elected officials did have before, but now we have a $4,000 insurance policy regarding that. Mr. Hunter, Hunter Tremble, if I don't know if he wants to comment on any of that, or has any comments or any questions upon it. But it'd be simplifying and saving the county some money and providing the insurance coverage that we need for employee theft and dishonesty. Taking something that's not ours to take.
I'll be glad to answer any questions now or after we need regarding your bonds, your insurance.
Comment, can I trust it?
The $4,000, is that the TCA code that's the sum of the bonds?
Yes.
For the trustee's office.
Yes, now, the trustee's office, if you want to go out and get your own individual bond, you can do that, but it's 4% for the first 3 million. Anything above the 3 million up to whatever the total blood pool amount is, it's additional 2%. So if it was 50 million, the first 3 million, you're charged 4%, and then you're charged 2% on the next 47 million. So that computes the north of a million dollars in bond limit, and then the premium is calculated from that, so. But the $4,000, you're covered, so.
But is that the same, does that make the test of, do they have that requirement?
Yes.
Mr. Husky, are you comfortable with that?
John, you asked me to look into that and the sentencing material on it. Previously, different offices had individual bonds that had to be issued at different levels. Trustees example, ones that had a much larger figure than most, depending on the dollar and the gravity, I didn't exactly what his level was, and the structure was higher than others, it's lower now. The statute passed a couple of years ago, now authorizes a blanket coverage to minimum $4,000 to be utilized in lieu of those various other bonds that had to be done, and it's specifically for the Attorney General, who said, addressed the issue of trustee, and said this does satisfy the requirement. It amend by implication the requirement, because it doesn't take away the other statute, but it provides an alternative that the county can elect to do. To do it, they must vote on it, be a two-thirds vote to win, which means you got to afford to be in votes to adopt that. Now, I, the question might be, if the trustee's office was concerned about the amount, I would ask Mr. Chairman, can you depart and take the office that might have more problem to get like an umbrella to cover some of it?
So you've got two lines of coverage that you're referring to, Mr. Husky. So, you've got two lines of coverage that you're referring to, Mr. Husky. You've got, um, you've got a first-party coverage, and you have a third-party coverage. If the county is sued, uh, for a mistake that's made in your office, let's say, John, that's going to be covered under elected official, public liability insurance, okay? You're covered there. If it's an act that you create, embezzlement, fraud, theft, et cetera, that's going to fall under the $400,000 insurance blanket. Whereas in years past, it was bonded. So now, uh, the statute two, three years ago was changed, and so the $400,000 blanket limit does satisfy, uh, that requirement. So it's up to you, it's up to the individual, it's up to the county commissioners. Um, if Mr. Mark Sonny would like to go out and buy, um, a higher limit, he can do so, uh, get bonded. Or if the commission votes to keep it $400,000, it's at $400,000. But that means requirements by state, so. Other offices, in years past, their limit was $100,000. It's a bonded amount for the principal. The insurance limit is, is higher, and it's also on a permanent, so it's not just $100,000 aggregate. It's exhausted, and we have to buy other coverage for every single occurrence during the policy period. An individual would have the $400,000. And they could be multiple individuals, hopefully not.
That's the good part, that's what I like. And, and, Mr. Tremble, I did get a message this afternoon, you called, and I apologize in particular about this. I was working on a brief for the county, and I didn't get it done, until I had to leave, come over here.
No worries.
That was reviewed extensively with our, in our orientation programs. Uh, discussed at several different committees and our individuals, and, uh, we felt certainly good about the $400,000. John?
If the commission is, is confident of this, I am too.
Thank you, okay. Uh, Helen, she had a comment, her question.
I can please, I say that it's per correction to explain that, but I wasn't certain upon the aggregate. So let's say, for instance, if it was in John's office, and he had three employees, and it's always 400, 400, 400, so now we're a million two aggregate, it's still covered under that 400, correct?
Are all three of those individuals involved in the same act?
Nope.
Nope, then it's 400, 400, 400.
If they gang together, and they, and they get, and they get the two. Okay, so, I'm sorry, I didn't see the actual cost versus the bond of the insurance. Uh, it probably was in your last meeting, so anybody who know what that's for?
We'll have to research that to determine the cost, I don't know, I don't know, we'll let her know. But we know it is less than the bond, right?
Now, it's less than.
Yeah, the way that's, the insurance policy.
In the past, we paid up to $25,000 for those individual bonds. Yes, that way, yes, but I'll get you that.
I think there is part of purpose to legislate action against pressure of the gals. Will the cost, cost the individual bonds?
And I would make one last comment on this. Last year, um, many of the bonds were maturing in 2018, and so those bonds have now expired. When we endorsed the policy to reflect the increase from 150,000 up to 400,000, the actual dollar increase or premium increase to do so was less than $450 annually.
Mr. Chairman, I'm saying, I'm calling to make my experience efficient to the, uh, I think we've had incidents here in the state of Tennessee, it's been reported, instability with public funds that probably, or I feel like had exceeded $400,000. I'm wondering, uh, it would cost us very little more to bump that to even 500 or 750, would it not, the premium? Can you comment on a premium increase for bumping it?
I'll be glad to request what it would cost to increase to those limits. I don't want to put anything out there that says it's going to cost exactly this much, but I don't think it would be basically that big of a difference.
To increase the limits?
That's correct, yeah.
I would suggest we go ahead and certainly pass this to go with the level we set. I guess we could always revisit that we need to increase the limits.
Is Amy taking, Amy taking the free of those? Amy, are you, are you the one that prepared your career in this?
Free of repayment, all that. No, we're, you can negotiate with him and bring that, what is it, increase premium lines. At least a half of you. I think it ought to be at least $70,000. But, you should, you may have a good idea.
Yeah, totally, good idea. Commissioner Miller?
We're just calling the umbrella.
Uh, so, the property portion of it would not. So, uh, we have an employee who was caught in the act, et cetera. The umbrella would not be, the umbrella strictly casualty or liability. However, we're sued, um, because one of our public officials or elected officials, uh, disuses funds, or gains, et cetera, et cetera, because he has that, we've got to remember that. Which is 5 million, right?
Yes, we have a $5 million umbrella. We pay in addition to our, we don't need.
Yeah, I'd like to vote it here, so we'll go to increase that up to 5 million from the lower level we had. So motion announced, go ahead and proceed with the $400,000. We can review that and amend, increase that later, so. Any other discussion? Thank you, honey. Let's vote please. And then we can certainly, the, during the, before the next meeting, we can review that and request increased coverage. If we need any way to get $400,000, we'll table that.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Any? Okay, thank you. Next item will be a, uh, Tim B., a discussion regarding benefits and insurance review and education. That's where we finally crafted that statement. And this time, I'd like to call forward, uh, the members of the support group, Mr. Tim Hilton and Kelly Gere, from the support group, and so they can come and make a presentation and discussion. And, uh, before we, uh, let me just give a little background on that, if I may. I have, uh, researched, and, uh, Mr. Hilton and I have had numerous discussions over time as to, uh, our benefits and the way we could possibly go forward and restructure some of that to make sure that we've got the best benefit program we can for our employees, for our people. And that's a commitment we owe to our people and, uh, our taxpayers. I feel really good about what they bring to the table. I guess I first met Tim three and a half, almost four years ago, at some of the association county mayor's meetings. And he and I have dialogued quite a bit on that. I feel really good about these services they bring to the table. And they have a very unique service and a program that they will present. We have vetted it, so this is nothing that we started discussion on yesterday or whatever. Uh, we've had, uh, they've been before personnel compensation committee, uh, before over the last couple of years. And we've talked about different projects and segments. So we're trying to get this crafted to be the best component, the best blend, the best product we can bring to the market today with our, uh, voluntary benefits, and we'll get into that in a second. But I would say this, uh, now the support group, they are the brokered record for, uh, different counties and Manchester City Government, whatever, and they've restructured that and with significant savings to, uh, our taxpayers and to our employees. And I would mention this, uh, if I may, uh, I guess about four weeks ago or so, um, I met on a Friday with Mr. Hilton and the HR director from Sevier County, who'd been on the road for seven years. That person had also been, uh, involved in HR management and worked for, for 35 years. And on that day, when they made a presentation to Lawrence County Government, in that one day, in that one visit, they were so, uh, sold on that, on the services they could bring to the table, that Lawrence County Government made the decision that day to go with the services that are recommended. And the, uh, and they also have another component of that, if I may, just to share, that you're getting more than just a good program on benefits. They will bring some HR services to Coffey County Government that we desperately need free of charge and no cost to our taxpayers with the HR program that they will, uh, provide, which, uh, is a significant financial impact. And, uh, I'm really impressed with that. But the, uh, the guy, this, uh, Sevier County, uh, HR manager, with his 35 years of experience in HR, said that with what he saw, or brought to the table, he was, he'd never seen anything like this in 35 years as far as the HR services that the support group could bring to Coffey County Government. And, uh, with, with, uh, hospital and only restructuring, with the shared apartment, with the transfer of the records to HR, uh, head is going to need some help in some of the work, but they can do a tremendous amount of this work for Coffey County Government. So I've said nothing to that, Tim, I'll turn it over to you. But, uh, I highly, highly recommend, uh, this, this approach. And it's time to get our insurance services, uh, right side up, and, uh, they can do that for us. And so that all showed up, and let Tim get a better presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, and Commissioners, thank you for last night. I know we spent a lot of time in our own meetings and everything, so I'm just going to cut to the chase and try to get to the meat of this as, as quickly as possible. Y'all have a packet there in front of me, and we have it broken down into three sections. That section one is on the voluntary benefit plans. The second is, the second section is on the medical, on the state plan. And then the third is the ancillary benefits that you all, uh, that the county pays, uh, for the employees there. So if you'll go back to number one there, Coffey County Government recommended changes to the benefit packages. Number one, the voluntary benefit plans, which, uh, is voluntary life and ABD or accidental death and dismemberment, disability, critical illness and cancer, and then also accident. Uh, yesterday, in meeting with Personnel and Compensation Committee, uh, the recommendation from that committee was to move from USAW interest carrier to One America and Allstate to offer employees a better benefit at a lower cost. So what we wanted to do there was, uh, get a, uh, get a motion on that, or an approval on that. So that's, that was there.
Mr. Simmons? So we had that recommendation from our Personnel Compensation Committee, uh, as a recommendation to the, uh, to the county commission for approval. So, uh, we have a motion to approve that recommendation. I'll make a motion. Uh, as to Tim, he's our chairman of Personnel Comp, so I think the, appropriate that he made that motion. But I've sent him to that motion. Second by Rosemary. And again, this was vetted through the three different, the separate conferences yesterday extensively. And we met from 1:00 to 3:00 on that, and then our full, our PNC committee met from 3:00 to about 4:30, and then we met with the different conferences on that. So we have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation from the Personnel Compensation Committee on those benefits. Discussion? Commissioner Crockett?
It says, uh, Colonel, it's 38,81,233 on that coverage.
Oh, you're moving on to the, I was going to get to that here in a few minutes.
That's a separate.
That's, that's, that's the last one there, we'll get through that. Thank you, Tom.
Any discussion?
Can you just clarify, give what this particular vote is going to go?
If you'll, if you'll turn, Lynn, if you'll turn to this there, it's going to be the, um, the voluntary life and accidental death and dismemberment, the disability, the critical illness and cancer, and then also the accident. These are the benefits that are, that are paid for by the employees. So in our breakout meetings last night, those were those products and benefits that somewhere, uh, that, um, when we quoted that out, shopped that out, we're somewhere between 20 and 55% cheaper, and then also with a better benefit. So that there is the employees' money, and trying to give them back, uh, a pay raise into their paycheck.
Good question. And other discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, in all due respect, you know, we saw this last night at our conference meetings, and, um, I feel there's probably a number of commissioners that maybe would like to have time to review some of the numbers and so forth to go with this. I feel, uh, you know, I've had sort of limited time to see this, with you as a matter of fact, you know, uh, heard the presentation last night in the whole office, and saw these numbers and so forth. And the numbers may be totally correct and valid and so forth, but I feel that, you know, commissioners need to have time to properly review, uh, an item before casting a vote. And so, uh, that's just a observation I have regarding this.
Okay. I may make a comment, and we have vetted this with our Personnel and Compensation Committee, and we talked about these, uh, and we've got to go ahead and either, if we don't do this now, it'll be next year. Uh, we've got to get this on the table because we have sign-ups in, in October and whatever. And, uh, at this point, uh, I'll ask the commissioners to trust me on this.
I just have a question. So if this has been something going on for, uh, three, three and a half years, why would this new commission, and this was presented to us less than 24 hours ago, why is it urgent to vote now? Why was it not voted on last year or a few months ago?
Could we have just never got through this one?
Could I ask?
Which felt like this was the right time to present this going forward. And at the time here, we, we could have done this earlier. I didn't want to get that into a, into a campaign season, anything like that, so we held it off. But, uh, I feel like the time is right on this. Uh, with the history that we've got with other counties, and going forward with this, we're seeing and moving this direction. And I'm just trying to, as the mayor of this county, to, uh, to get our benefit structures in, in better shape than where we are.
Could I ask the Personnel Committee Chairman, uh, what exactly did y'all do to benefits? And were there other options? Uh, did you have comparisons from others?
I mean, there were, there were options. There were people that we didn't do. We met with support, uh, what, two, three times, so. This is probably the third time we met with them. I can't remember the other companies. I tried to ask anyone, cause anyone didn't sit in our, hadn't sat in our meetings, but, uh, and I was, I'm just, uh, the mayor ran over the other companies that came, but it's been over a period of two years that they've been. But, uh, um, you know, I'm kind of, if you just ask them about the vote, that's, but the process we've been going through has been ongoing. You know, I've been ready to, I've been willing to vote any given time, as far as I'm concerned.
But we know the cost will be lower on this package that we're presenting here. It's a significant savings to our county employees and a better coverage. Kevin? Chair will recognize Kelly Gere.
Just to, to let you all know, one of the things that, we're an independent broker, I think so. We don't write insurance for any particular carrier. Uh, you have disabled, athletic, colonial, One America, we can shop all of the benefits.
They're trying to get the best bank.
And that's what we do. And we spreadsheet them, and we work with a lot of counties throughout the state of Tennessee. And we, we are familiar with, uh, purchasing the 57 Act that, uh, this county has entered because we do Murray County's benefits, and they're under the 57. Uh, we're also familiar with the ABD one. And, um, anytime that a state, the state conference office comes and does an audit on the benefits, we pass audits like this because we spreadsheet- we pass audits like this, because we spreadsheet embedded in pretty single carrier that does group life or disability, and we're the broker of record. We could leave the benefits alone and make more money, because we're paid off with commission. We are proposing that you give your employees a better benefit at a lower cost, which has our intention. But that's just, that's what we do, and we're very passionate about it. Because we realize that the employees that work at county government are on a very lower, on a lower budget. And being a single mom for years, that lived paycheck to paycheck, and went without medical insurance for several years because I couldn't afford it, I understand that feeling.
Well, I'm not, I'm not at all questioning, you know, or insinuating that we don't go with the savings for our county employees. I just would like a little bit more information and more time to understand that you all are in fact the best broker. I mean, we've had 24 hours with this company to absorb what they've given us. I don't know about any of the other brokers that you guys, Mr. Stubblefield, you know, a little bit more information for me to make, to feel confident in my vote on this. What if there's more, what if there's another broker that has more savings? I don't know.
Am I?
I'm with, I'm in those hours, I'm sort of trying to figure this out too, and I just feel like I sort of had very little time to trip on this. You said it's impossible for this to be voted on in October?
We don't need in October, November. So we're past the renewal date, or the?
What's the renewal date?
The re, well, this renewal here is on your voluntary benefits. The effective date is September, is January 1st. So the big, the big, you might say, animal in the room is the state medical that you're on right now. That's got to be enrolled in October. So that's got to be done by your employees by October. And so we even thought about trying to push this later on and to, you know, to talk to some of the department heads and everything, and then come back to commission at the end of, you know, after that. But we didn't have enough time, because October's that big deadline. And so what's happening here is, is that, and I'll just tell it like it is, okay? Been doing this since 2001. We've had the endorsement of the Association of County Mayors since 2005, albeit Mr. Curtis' events across the state with county commissioners. We do county government correct. And I do appreciate your comment, you don't know me from Adam. So it's kind of like when I first come up and I speak to employees for the first time, the very first time, I'm nothing more than a line salesman, a line insurance salesman. We don't use any outside enrollment. It's us, it's me and our staff. So for 17 years, God bless their hearts, some, some peoples had to sit down with me for 17 or 18 years. But right now, over home, your enrollment that your, that your employees go through right now, they have no help. You have an outside enrollment from an, outside of the state, or you may get, like, you get somebody that's from Tennessee, but I doubt very seriously you get the same enrollment year over year. But right now, if you look at what's going on within your county, you're losing quality employees. After you recruit them, after you hire them, after you train them, and then they leave and go somewhere else because of, maybe the salary is the same, but the benefits are not the same. Right now, we, because I am your broker now, right now, we are asking our employees, and this is what we discussed last night, and I'm not sure of the former commissioners or the returning commissioners if you got to see this presentation, but right now, if you go, if you look at the medical, you've got employees from a family standpoint that are, we're asking them to pay $1,789 a month, or the $1,676 a month, or $1,302 a month. And as we get into my talk track here, you have in front of you, that one little piece there as far as on number two on medical, and you go to the fourth bullet point right there. The goal is the county to become marketable, to obtain competitive medical rates outside the state plan that families can afford. So we've got a little small county that we've been doing business with for 10 years. Little county, better known as the major county, grander counties. They pay $250 towards their net. Their employee rate is $248 a month, total, it's totally premium. The family rate total is $700. But right now, we don't have that luxury here at Coffee County. The other thing is, is that you all are on the state plan. We're going to come in and educate your employees and not charge you a penny. So those are the only, all the things. If you all need to take more time, I understand that, and I can appreciate that. But I've been talking to the mayor now for 40 years, and here's what I know. There's one thing that has to change. The employees are still on the benefits that they pay for. They're still paying more, somewhere between 20 and 50% more for a lesser benefit. And when I sat down, Michael, one of the first people I sat down with was with him, and I looked at what he was paying currently on the benefits that he pays for, and it was somewhere between 20 and 45% cheaper with a better benefit.
I don't think our problem is necessarily with this plan. I think my frustration, I won't speak for anybody else, is simply I'm taking a vote or something that I've had less than 24 hours to look at, and I don't like doing business that way, and I don't feel like, feeling like I'm back into a corner.
Well, I can appreciate that.
And I, and I appreciate the employees. I've been one of those employees that's been told, you're going to get better benefits, it's going to cost you less, and then when we got them, it wasn't everything it was promised to be. I'm not saying that's your company at all. What I'm saying is, as a commission, I don't like doing business where I have to get a piece of paper 24 hours in a row and time and say, hey, guys, we need to vote on this tonight.
I can, I can appreciate that, but I guess the, you know, I guess the best recommendation I could have is Commissioner Hollinsworth there. He's a client of mine right now, that's sitting in Manchester. Okay? I met him four, four years ago or so, and I'm sure the first time he met me, I was just a line salesman. Okay? So I will speak for him, but if you need to know about the needs of our group and everything, then you can ask him, but here's what we're thinking right now, okay? We can postpone this, okay? But at some given time, I don't know, it'd have to be postponed until, then we're going to keep these benefits in here for the next year.
Is this something that next year we can review again?
Of course. Of course. Because what we do on an annual basis, we shop it on an annual basis anyway. So we work for you, and we work for the employees.
I'd like to recognize Commissioner Hunt, he's requested a.
Quick question. Getting our approval is primarily really need to sell this to the employees as well, is that right? For the savings and the benefits you're laying out?
Well, when we sit, when we come in and do the enrollment, we sit down one-on-one with each employee and walk them through which benefits that they should.
So your answer is yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
My conundrum is, I have two members of this assembly for insurance questions. Commissioner Bryan has an insurance background, he's wanting to put some brakes on. Our chairman has an insurance background, he's wanting the panel to ask him. If that being said, I'm going to slide with the mayor, I'm going to call the question.
I second.
Can we have a vote on any debate? Have a motion to suspend debate? Are these, are they allowed to comment?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak here.
What about that? The hell of a.
Motion to. Can debate?
So have a motion to end debate?
Are you ready to vote on what's on?
Yes, ready to vote on, let's vote please.
At the point of order, this will take two sides, correct?
Yes. End debate, okay.
Let me explain, if you vote yes, and two-thirds of you vote yes, then you immediately have to vote on the insurance question. There's no more debate on the insurance question if you vote in. If the motion to end debate fails, then you can continue to discuss the insurance question.
Okay. Let's vote please. This is a normal discussion, I were voting. The world of insurance is very comprehensive. I know the world that Commissioner Bryan and I participated in was primarily life insurance and fire and auto and property capture, that we had, we had virtually no exposure whatever to these other benefits packets that were, or health insurance that we're talking about. That's not being disrespectful to anyone, that's just stating, that's the world that Bob and I lived in, and we were thankful we didn't get into the health insurance and some of the other stuff that we, that was available over here. So let's have a vote.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Voting failure, okay? So we continue with discussion? Yeah, tell them. I'll make a question.
Well, I have a comment, because we did have an opportunity to go over things, and we did discuss this with Commissioner Hollinsworth about the benefits that he had during the time that he was with the fire department and the service that he got. It was my understanding on the review that we as the county were going to save money, and that the employees were going to get a better benefit, and that things were baby steps so that we could save more money on the next review.
And we have an HR benefit provided too, as far as professional instructions with HR.
Which was a lot of instructions of nothing that any of the county employees were giving previous, none, zero. There was substantial savings to the employees that even those that were currently taking the insurance, even though they paid, it was going into other little savings accounts, other little credit cards. So even if they went, they still got those benefits. They didn't lose anything. That's the way that I understood it. Is that correct?
Over on the medical, yes, ma'am.
All of the other benefits that you were describing were all funded, and we're going to save money, and they were going to get better benefits. That's the way I understood it.
Okay, someone else, I think had a comment.
Dwight?
Dwight, yeah, perfect. Who's next? I think Emily next. She had her, she pressed the buzzer before. She have a comment, move on, okay? Uh, Noelle.
My question is, I heard Kelly say for the agent breaker. How long has that been?
I suppose in the last, the last month.
Yes, I know.
So nobody's over yet?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Sorry, just.
We'll end discussion here after this.
I have a couple of questions. To me, this comes down to a time issue, it's one of these things. I guess the question I have, if anyone, if I asked anybody the answers, is there any significant cost to the county just involved in transitioning from one company to the other? It appears to me that we're too tight to get another company in to bid this year. The deal on the table is better than the deal we have now. If we get into it next year and we decide we want to look at someone else, is there a significant cost to change the deal after review?
No.
I appreciate your answer, but I think we all have that next question answered by our fine, I think we'll take that, that'll lead to that.
The voluntary benefits, you know, the dental package is part of the budget process, but our ancient record, our former ancient record that we had was under our voluntary, our voluntary benefits, and so we choose the dental. Now, if we get out of the state plan, which I know they're not recommending right now, because if we get out of the state plan, it'll take two years to be able to get back in the state plan. So obviously, that's not the recommendation I'm hearing, but I believe Mr. Hudson just wants to make sure the employees understand their state health insurance.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Now, we're not recommending at this point to get out of the state plan at all. We are recommending based off in correcting something and moving us in a long-term direction that will save us county money and provide us better benefits going forward. And voluntary, I think you did mention that we will have, we've already verified where the company you looked at, there will, there will be significant savings on the voluntary benefits there. In addition to the HR function that they will provide free of charge.
Right. And then also, you know, if you look at, you know, when we were talking last night, just, you know, since, maybe I brought up, the dental, you know, that's an employer, that's a, a Coffee County employer paid benefit. And if you look at that information there, that we talked about last night, we want to talk about ways, you know, we just don't go throwing around pennies, you know, we work off tax, a tax penny here. But, you know, we've got an average of 450 members on the plan.
On the dental plan.
On the dental plan, it's 100% paid for on the employee. 249 members have not used that benefit at all.
58 actually out of that body.
Zero. So when we shopped that out, you know, to all the different carriers, the Cadillac carrier in the state is Delta Dental. Delta Dental is hardly ever cheaper than Blue Cross Blue Shield. But when we quoted it out, they came back in and said 11,000.
Is that Delta Dental through the state, or is that separate?
That's separate.
I have one more question.
Do you mind?
One more question.
Okay. So when we quoted it out, we quoted it out to about nine different carriers. We presented two to you all. One was United Healthcare, the other was Delta Dental. Anytime we can get Delta Dental into one of our groups, because of the network and because of the benefit, and as again, as I said, they're the Cadillac, they came in versus Blue Cross Blue Shield with a two-year rate hold, the Blue Cross Blue Shield is a one-year rate hold, and Delta Dental came in at 11,228.64, cheaper. That's county money. Now, I don't know about you, I'm not throwing away almost $12,000.
That's a two-year rate hold, two-year guarantee.
But the other thing is, is that we're given a benefit that's 100% paid for by the county. And we've got 249 people that are on the plan that have money to use in it. I think that we can spend our money and use our money a little bit better.
Well, I could say that when our HR director checked last year, our dental plan, we didn't move because the providers were not adequate, we weren't enough providers in this area. So that's one reason why we stayed with the plan we have. And also, you mentioned the agent of record. When was the agent of record checked?
Probably, I think we got that probably three or four weeks ago.
Well, was there an issue with our other agent of record? But this is all new to me, I'm just confused.
Well, let me just, let me just say this, okay? What we've done is that, Kelly, as we said in our meetings, Kelly is a certified human resource professional. So from what I'm understanding. So, from what I'm understanding, um, over the past year, two years, Coffee County has been trying to, um, develop and, um, you might say grow an HR department, okay? And we do this all across the, the, the state. A lot of our county governments don't have the resources to have an HR department that's going to administer, communicate, and make sure that all your, your, your policies and procedures and your benefits are compliant, whether it be on benefits or compensation or FMLA or whatever it may be, or sexual harassment or abuse. I mean, so what do y'all do with that? Well, we come in and we started building that. And we did that as a value add. So since two thousand and five, since we've had our relationships across the state, one thing that we said we never would do, because Kelly and I came together in two thousand and eight, if we take ourselves back to two thousand and eight, what was the economy like from two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten? One of the things that we couldn't do was give a county government an invoice for Kelly's services or my services. So what we did, we took what, uh, was being, uh, generated in commissions, the benefits that are, are, um, presented to your employees, and we took those commissions and reinvested them back into the county such as HR services, a benefit administration system, which is a technology that is four dollars and fifty cents per month per employee, plus ten thousand dollars for us to build that out. So we give that to our counties free of charge. So you've got an employee in an emergency room, don't know what they have, they put, they pull out their smartphone, they put in their username and password, and there's everything that they have on their phone. Your current group that's been here a long time, have they done that for you? Most of the time, everywhere we've been, it's been a local relationship the county has had. There's neither here nor there, but we turn around and turn around and reinvest dollars back into county to take care of your employees and then also help your administration and your payroll departments and everything, make sure that those benefits are administered, communicated, and are compliant. We had somebody that didn't trust us on this just the other day up in Mexico. Small little group, fifty employees, they went out to ADP to do what we did. We haven't zero charged their form, ADP gave them a forty thousand dollar bill. So, you don't know me from Adam, at least you need to talk to Charlie Curtis, if you need to call the Association of County Mayors, you need to talk to Jimmy, you need to talk to somebody over at the City of Manchester or at the other counties that we do business with, Marshall, Murray, Kendrick County, then, uh, we've got plenty of phone numbers. I can't help the crunch. But the reason I got involved in it to begin with was, is that we've tried to market you all off the state plan. If, even if you wanted to reap, you're not. Because it's not a healthy group and the demographics are not there. It was two percent increase for twenty nineteen from the state. What are we going to do if it's a ten percent or a fifteen percent increase?
One thing I just wanted to mention is, uh, because she had mentioned about the child market has been on the, uh, map, the provider network. Um, so that's one thing that we vet immensely, one of the things in the presentation is that we always, with dental envision, the biggest, uh, thing that we hear from employees on dental envision is my dentist isn't in my network or my eye doctor isn't in my network. So we will get that more than we do anything else or, or at the same value as everything else. So, um, like, one of the major problems, and you all aren't aware of this, but one of the major problems with the state dental envision is that two years ago, they dropped Delta Dental and they went to MetLife and Cigna. And all throughout the state, county governments are calling, wanting us to get them out of the state dental envision. Why? Because MetLife and Cigna are cheaper, but they don't have the network of providers, okay? Delta Dental has the largest network of providers through the state of Tennessee, okay? Um, Delta Dental was the premier provider for the state plan. Um, and that's why you, you thought we were talking about the state plan, but two years ago they moved. And so, um, I just wanted to also reiterate that, that all of those components are looked at because we have to look at employees and deal with employees face to face, and we take that very, we don't think that lightly. So, um, we do look at the network of providers with dental and vision, and just to mention, we haven't even talked about vision. One of the things that has been said repeatedly by employees and people on the, um, committee is that we do not have, uh, an adequate number of vision providers in network with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And, um, so when we went and shopped at VSP, it's coming in competitive to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and VSP has a much larger network and more benefit. Um, the county was with VSP some year ago and the employees liked that better. So, um, I just wanted to put that out there as well, that we, we do a lot of the diligence and that's how we spreadsheet things so that we're not just selling something, saying that it's better and we don't know that it's better.
So you say you looked at the network as larger. You're talking about the whole network or you're talking about the network of this area?
This area.
This area.
This area. We actually, here's what we do. Uh, we actually pull a provider utilization report that the, the members have actually gone to, and we send that full file to the dental and vision carriers so they can run what they call a disruption analysis.
Come on.
Did you say Jimmy has this insurance?
He did have.
He did have? Well, let's ask him. Jimmy, if you've been on this insurance, is it better? Is it cheaper? Do you have more providers? Are you paying more? Are you ready to check it and get something else? Tell me what you think.
I'm very pleased with it. We went through this proceeding, uh, four or five years ago, looking around, looking around, and kind of looked, we kind of spun that would come back to Mr. Hilton. I have no complaints with him whatsoever. His HR service was, I thought, excellent. He gave us his personal phone number. Have we had something come up? Did he get right on?
And you can check with Bridgette and, and that mentioned also, and I, I guarantee you will confirm what he just said.
In that four or five year period, how many increases has he had?
I don't think it increased even. None.
I was, I was better.
Uh, so what, you're with the fire department, correct?
Yeah, we're the same, yes.
You were, okay. Did he, did they come and sit down with each and every individual?
Each and every, each and every individual was sat down with and talked to and advised them what to do. I, I think a lot of those, the service that he gave actually saved money because he would, you know, a lot of folks don't know a lot about it, and he would, you know, would serve his, his HR service and was, you know, pointing him in the cheaper, best direction I know.
And I know you used to work for a hard time, and I know sometimes they're, they're people, it's hard for them to understand, or it's hard for people to understand at times. Uh, was it easy to understand the allocation of benefits and all that stuff?
It was. He broke it down to us, he broke it down to the employee where they could, you know, who they knew what was going on.
Being a firefighter, I can, you know, I understand.
Tim, at the, at the fire department, we were a little lucky down near Manchester. Uh, you know, there and there, I call it break rooms, their living quarters where they do all their cooking and everything. We have a big write board there, it's all, all on the wall. So basically, an open enrollment before I'd sit down one-on-one with each employee or each firefighter, I, I would go over the benefits and everything and then, you know, which, which medical plan were they going to enroll in? Well, we have one gentleman that said, okay, this is my situation, how's this plan going to pay and how's this other plan going to pay? And it was basically on that, you know, a PTO versus a, a health savings, uh, account plan. So I would just basically, because I'm a, I'm a financial advisor, I trade, I would just basically pencil it out there on the write board, okay? Everybody's situation is different. So then when we went to sit down with them, they had a better understanding, some of them would move to that and just say, others wouldn't. The other thing is, is that we would have people that would come in that would have, you know, eight hundred, nine hundred hours of PTO and they're buying short-term disability. Why? It wouldn't make sense. Or they buy, or they have dental, they're buying dental, or they're buying vision, but they never use it.
And finally, to interject, when we sit down here in meetings and that with personnel compensation, I mean, there were several members on the committee that have all short, that had been sold short-term disabilities, pretty disabled, that didn't need it because they had over a year of sick leave. So it's just engaging with employees, getting them to understand what all of these coverages are, what they need, how it covers them, and whether they should spend their money on it or not. I mean, people buy dental and they don't go to the dentist. People put vision on children that don't wear glasses. So it's, it's an educational, you know, it's different. It's not selling a product.
With that said there, you know, I want to get dental for my newborn. Why? Well, what if? Well, why don't you wait for them to get some teeth? You know, you're only making this decision for the year, okay? And, and real quick about me, okay, I'm a housing project kid. Now, I'm a housing project kid today, but we're always looking over our shoulders if somebody's gaining on us. If you left that light on, left that refrigerator door open, left that front door open, what'd you get? Get whipped, okay? And my brother Joel, who was the, and I told some people over at home yesterday, he was the high school, head football coach at Central High School there in Knoxville. And when I got in the cells, the first thing he did, he pointed his finger at me. He said, if you go out there and give my, give our family a bad name, I'm going to whip the crap out of you, boy. So here's what we said. We would come in, sit down with you every single year with your employees. I gotta be truthful. I gotta be honest. And here's one thing I can never do, provide you a solution based on your back pocket. And I don't stand up here and tell you how we do it, but the best thing to do, call Charlie Curtis, call Bridgette, call one of the county government people that we, we have as clients. Yes ma'am.
I'm just going to make a statement. My previous job, I was a county employee for twenty-five years, and my husband's a city employee. To reiterate what Jimmy said, we had the family insurance through the city because most county employees cannot afford the county insurance, the family insurance. We've had people actually refuse jobs at Angel Services, some of the other places because they're basically working for the family insurance. So I, I mean, I think you all could do anything but help us to vet the insurance. It, it couldn't make it any worse than it already.
So again, to reiterate, I'm a, and, and...
I was going to say, some of the new members might not know Charlie Curtis, but if they don't know Charlie Curtis.
Charlie Curtis is the executive director of the County Commissioners Association. So right now, uh, for the entire state. So right now, he's got his September and October meetings. He's, he has, um, sent me like five emails, Tim, which breakout sessions are you coming to? But right now, I've got six, I've got six enrollments that are backed up that's making it hard for me to get them, okay? So that's Charlie Curtis. I met Charlie Curtis from, for Ed Condon, who was the executive director of the Association of County Mayors back in two thousand and five. And the guys that have been in, I'll call it politics, okay? Uh, if, if you're a county, uh, government, um, elected official, uh, you go to these sessions, you go to these conferences down at, um, C-Tas, Murphy'sburg, wherever it may be, you go talk to somebody and somebody will come up to you and say, don't do business with that person, or that's a great company, do business with them. It's real simple, okay? It's a close-knit group for the team it's coming on to, okay? But again, people's needs matter, okay? So we let our body of work over the past, in, in county governments, uh, since two thousand and eight, remember I got the endorsement in two thousand and five? Took me three years to get my first piece of business. That's how long it took. Because it's a close-knit group, they vet you pretty hard, okay? I apologize that I'm here, and this is the first time that, that you commissioners have met me and, and the budget director and everything, but again, if you want to give me a call, my cell number, I gave it to you last night, my cell number's eight-six-five-six-six-one-eight-zero-three-zero. We sit down with people on a day, on a, on an annual basis, and when you give that cell phone number to people, sometimes you're walking out of church on Sunday morning at ten thirty, and you get a phone call, and it's from Hatters counterpart at another county, and she says, Tim, what does so-and-so have in benefits? I said, let me get to my car, I'll pull it up and I'll tell you. Why? She said, so-and-so passed away last night in an accident with three small children. And so, those are the relationships that we have. I don't know if you're getting that service right now or not from your car or former broker or whatever, or from where you work at right now, but that's the service that employees we represent if I'm not.
I recognize Emily, they were going to wrap yourself in the volunteer home, so in the chair, chair recognizes Emily.
Okay, just, just to clarify, so this is going to be a savings to the county?
Yes ma'am.
And it's going to benefit the employee. This is not going to cost our county employees anything, this is not going to cost the county anything. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And we have a recommendation from Mr. Stubblefield, you got, you have said that you all have have vetted this. Right, 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 right. You were the chair of that, okay? Okay, so...
There's regulation to the premium.
Volunteer. And that was, that was per the personnel compensation committee?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And you're already the broker anyway, so, okay.
I appoint him as broker reg.
Okay. All right. I don't want to, I, I would never want to, uh, inhibit savings on the county or a benefit to a county employee, but I want to make sure that I understand fully what I'm voting on.
I agree, I respect, I appreciate that. And with that in mind, uh, I respect that, I appreciate that, and I apologize to commissioners, just trust me on that, that the timing is right now. And I know that you're concerned about this being, we hit you yesterday and explained it, but I'm asking you to trust me on this, this has been vetted. And the second aspect that we're forgetting that is a tremendous benefit that we're not even acknowledging or understanding is the HR benefit that this award group can bring to Coffee County and helping their HR program move along. It is time. We're trying to get professional service there in HR and upgrade that and also get, make our insurance services programs better for our people. I've always said for four years, when Tim and I started talking about this and with other brokers, uh, we'll talk, but right from, uh, if we don't have a program that's equal to a better and lower cost or better and save our people money, we're not even, and this will, this is delivering on that. And I'm just asking the county to trust me on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Stubblefield is chairman of the Personnel and Conversation Committee. I guess, especially a lot of years of commissioners and maybe some obviously that's been here, I, I guess one of the concerns is in proper vetting, uh, this particular broker and group and other brokerage groups by personnel compensation committee over the past two to three years. Is that correct?
Okay, I guess what I'm asking for is a reassurance that we've vetted numerous other brokers in providing these same coverages.
They're not supposed to be in the room to give the same, to give the same speech that Tim had like this. They've got the same, give the same speech that Tim and you have, is, give the same speaker.
And he's presented this before Manchester City, that with other brokers as well, in the past.
But, Miss is on the same committee, she's heard the same people, same...
Yes, I guess what I'm asking is reassurance that your committee has vetted numerous other representatives, and has arrived at the recommendation to support you over all the others that you have vetted.
In my opinion, that's what I'm listening to, and the other two that I've heard, to me, that supporting them better off.
And one thing, this is on voluntary benefits, of course, things will hopefully evolve with our medical plans, HHS, and various areas, et cetera. The one thing I think that gives me a little bit more consolation here, is this is on voluntary benefits portion, and hopefully, we're going to evolve to improve our census data in the order to our group, to make us more attractive in our major medical program for our employees. And certainly, I hope that's a long-term result.
That's correct.
In our action. Now, with the HR services, I hope, you know, the platform is great. I hope it's not a platform that controls our HR department, and I know you could probably shake your head and say, "No" for that, and I hopefully, hopefully, that will be the case, because I want it to be a tool and an asset to that HR department. And, you know, you may have such a good platform and everything, any HR department did, we want to have it, from that standpoint. But I'm concerned also, at the standpoint of the employees, and I appreciate what Mr. Hollinsworth shared, you know, to see what impact, you know, your service has been on the employee. And hopefully, it'll still be a positive impact within our HR department, and allow it to still have the autonomy that it needs to have.
Again, I definitely, if I could say one last thing, I definitely have a problem if that turns out to be, if they took over the HR department and kind of ran that, I would definitely have a major problem with that.
I don't want that to happen.
Yeah, I know, I know you wouldn't let that happen. But the reason I had a problem, that's one of the things that kind of made them stand out, was their HR, you know, assistant HR. And the reason we, the reason that we went the way we did, or I guess, the Personnel Comp went the way they did with this recommendation, we wanted to take a small step tonight. We felt like with this commission, being new, with 11 new members, we figured it would be kind of like a shock and all, to bring all this in and put it on all at once. Of course, it's a shock with this recommendation tonight, with the smaller thing that we're trying, that we proposed tonight, that we tried to just throw the big picture in here, the big insurance in here, medical and everything, it would be a shock. So we just want to take a baby step tonight, and maybe bring the medical on later. So that was the intent tonight, just to bring something small, you know, baby steps, and then work our way into the medical.
Yeah, I'm going to close the discussion after one comment. Our Manchester budget director had made a statement the other day, Dr. Perron was Tim, but apparently, I don't know what the subject, how that arose, or whatever, but she made the statement essentially that if she had, if she was faced with, Dr. Perron, if she was faced with a decision of giving up her, the use of her car, or losing support group, she'd give up her car first. I think that is a significant statement, and it's not a, it's not a city car, it's her car. But anyway, I have said that off the top, and if you have one more comment, then we will.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to taking over an HR department, too old, want no part of it, basically, what we try to do, and we think we're very good at it, is that we act like we're corporate, and Coffee County is a branch, and we teach them how to fish, or how to do HR, administration, communication, compliance, passing the controllers' audit, and those type of things, so that you all can go do what you want to do inside there, of taking care of compensation and benefits for your employees. So we want no part of taking over an HR department. The other thing is, Bobby, I met you how many years ago? Two, three?
My memory's not that good.
Well, two or three years ago, I was down here, I think Merrick Ordeal had me down here, we first met at the Association of County Mayors, and I've been in two or three meetings, with four meetings with Tim, and a couple of meetings with Bobby and everything. So we've been down here presenting this same plan that we, that we have in all these different counties, and here we are four years later, okay? So, I mean, Bobby and I have talked, he's seen our presentation years ago, okay? And what we do is we keep tweaking it every single year. So now, what we've done, we've added another thing to it, which is compensation and benefits, because here it is in Middle Tennessee. And if you go one way off the interstate, in that corner to the left or to the right, the economy's a little bit different. But in Middle Tennessee, the economic, the economy down here is very, very good, but the recruiting, hiring, training, and retaining of employees is paramount to it. I don't know what you ran on. To get elected, we got to be able to protect our employees. And right now, within county governments across the state, we're losing those employees that have been with us for 25 or 30 years, that are solid, solid employees for us. And we go to look to what we're recruiting from, and the ones that have great opportunities or options, sometimes we don't get them. So if that continues to go on, what will we look like in two, three, four, five years here? Okay? It's not doing the gloom here. House is not on fire. But we do need to take a step.
Mr. Tim, your comment?
I was just going to say, in regards to the HR, some of, some of those things are like making sure that the cafeteria plan documents are, are up to date, and all the required annual notices that employers need to give on the health plan, and things like that. We coordinate all of those things into the employees' materials and their guide, make it very easy. And you all don't know me, Tim told you his background, I came out of HR with General Shellbrook, working with brick and block guys at the plant in Knoxville. I'm passionate about employees. That's, that's my passion. I didn't like insurance, I did not like insurance people. I looked at them like used car salespeople. So, we, we do employee education above and beyond what any broker you will find out there does. And I think the employees really value that, because they understand insurance better than they ever did. And what we're talking about, just moving the volunteer, which the county pays no money on, to help save the employees money, and give them a better benefit, and gives us the opportunity to come in and help educate them on their state's medical options, that nobody is helping educate them on right now. You all aren't aware of this, unless you've been an employee, but as an employee in the state medical plan, before we came and educated you guys on the state medical, what, what did you have as education for the state plan? The state posts a video on their website, Tennessee Parkers for Health, that people can go watch.
And they're going to watch it.
How well does that work with Highway Department, the Sheriff's Department, the EMS people?
And usually, what happens is, is the employee is going to migrate to the least expensive cost. It has no earthly idea that if they're faced with a, a life-threatening illness, a dental one themselves, or with their loved one, what's going to be the impact, okay? So.
To me, I see this as no brighter on this discussion here. Was there any other comment? Bobby, your...
No more comments. I wanted to sit waiting on taking over the HR department, I think you know what the drift was of that, as far as, you know, getting the benefit of the HR services, but, you know, being integrated property with our HR department, and being a huge part of it. The other thing, probably more important goes tonight, is not to end the debate, because I think a lot of your commissioners here tonight felt uncomfortable.
I agree.
Because I had the time, and we got a time restraint that we're having to deal with here, unfortunately. And based on mayor's recommendation, personnel compensation recommendation, Bobby has been heard from Mr. Hollinsworth, and Tim has done a good job, and these things, we're trusting in that, and making our vote, but voting not to end the debate is probably not a bad vote in most instances, because I think the time we spent since that vote has made a lot of commissioners, I believe, more comfortable, and we need to continue to remember that as we deal with business.
I agree. So the bottom line of this is, we're bringing a better product, better coverage, lower cost to our people, with an HR benefit that we brought on board to help the county government in HR. So with that in mind, I think it's time to move. Let's go, please. And I appreciate Mr. Brown's comment. Thank you. Now we've got, shall we take a five-minute break, and come back where you're at, before we go? Okay? Give y'all bathroom room for everyone. Go, go, go.